Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our November Lewisville Town Council meeting. It's always a pleasure to have those of you in the audience with us tonight. Those of you who are watching at home or on our Channel 6, we welcome, actually on our Facebook page, welcome. And if I get the thumbs up here in just a few minutes, it means that we're going to be, we'll be streaming live on Channel 6 as well as a live stream on our webpage. So if that happens, we'll all applaud because it, I got the thumbs up all the way around. So we've got multiple platforms from which you can view your town council meeting. And I want to thank Rachel, I want to thank Hank, I want to thank George. It's important that we try to provide as many platforms as possible and opportunities for you to watch your government in action. So tonight, it's Facebook Live, it's Channel 6 Live, and it's also our website live. Very good. We will start this evening with our invocation from Boe Howf, if you'll lead us, Bo, and that'll be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Ed Smith. If you'll please stand and join us if you're able.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we give you thanks for this day, and we thank you for your presence here with us this evening. Our Father and our God, we give you thanks, first of all, tonight as we prepare for Veterans' Day tomorrow, we give thanks for all those who serve and who have served in all of our armed services. We give thanks for our town and the collegiality of all those who work in a united way to advance the interests of the town and its citizens, putting differences aside, whether these interests be political, religious, economic, social, or otherwise. And Father, we ask your blessings upon this town, and we ask your blessings upon this meeting this evening and all those who serve here in the town of Louisville. And Father, we give thanks for all that you've given to us, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is customary, we will introduce our town, your town council to you, starting all the way down on the right-hand side.
I'm Jeff Singer. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ed Smith.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Mock.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Byrne.
Noted, please, Councilman Sadler has an excused absence, and Councilman Franklin, we're not sure about at this point. Maybe he'll be joining us in a few minutes. Very good. I'd like to introduce our staff, for those of you who may not know them, starting over here with our town manager, Hank Perkins, our attorney, who gave a wonderful invocation. Boe Howf. Back on the count, the camera tonight is Rachel Domenico, and she's looking at her Facebook page as well to make sure everything is going on okay. Our town clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker. Our town finance officer is Pam Oral. Let's see, town planner Marty Myers is here. Do we have anybody else that I'm missing? George, George Howzer is back at the press table. Thank you, George. Good to see you. You're going to serve double duty with technical and reporting for the newspapers tonight, right? Great. Glad you all are here. Folks, I've got a couple of additions on the agenda, if you would please make note. We'd like to add under Presentations, this would be 3B, we have a special recognition that we'd like to give, and our Corporal Douglas Fay will give that for us. So that would be 3B. Under New Business, 6A, I believe we have an item that we have to deal with tonight, and that's a resolution on our Gateway Project. And those are the only two additions. Council members, are there any additions, corrections that you would like to make?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Singer makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Thank you. That's our agenda. Mr. Manager, our consent agenda, please.
Okay, the consent agenda consists of Resolution 2016-053 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for September of 2016, the approval of council briefing and action minutes from October 6, 2016, the approval of council meeting minutes from October 13, 2016, the approval of council closed session minutes from October 13, 2016, Resolution 2016-052 accepting the resignation of Katie Heath from the Louisville Planning Board, Ordinance 2016-035 amending budget ordinance 2016-015 in an amount of $2,682 to transfer unspent appropriation from the 25th anniversary celebration to administration overtime line item, and lastly, Ordinance 2016-036 amending budget ordinance 2016-015 in an amount of $700 to remove two trees outside the Nissen House at the request of the Louisville Historical Society.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our consent agenda is generally matters that come before the council on a routine basis. We take them all as a group for efficiency. However, if any council member wishes to pull any of these items off individually for discussion and motion, we can do that as well. Council members, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Singer makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passed unanimously. We're privileged to have tonight a couple of fun presentations. The first presentation is going to be by Captain Ricky Spanar, who's going to talk about our Swift Water Rescue Group from Louisville Fire Department that was called into service down in the eastern part of the state during the flooding. Ricky, come on up, and we're looking forward to your presentation tonight.
Thanks for this opportunity. We believe that there was some interest in what we had done down east, and maybe the news didn't make it back effectively. We were actually dispatched to the east in the afternoon of the 8th. We had been prepared or pre-warned that we could be available for dispatch to head down. The first initial dispatch we were given was not to head to a particular area. They gave us an exact address for a confirmed rescue. This rescue was two and a half hours away. We had to please respond. Before we made it out of Guilford County, we were redirected that that rescue had taken, been taken care of, and we were directed to Garner Fire Department. We arrived at Garner late that evening due to some road closures and some impasses in the highway that we were, we came across. We introduced ourselves to Garner, they took us in, and we, in essence, chased them everywhere they had a water rescue call. They knew the roads that were closed, so we followed them. Every response that we did to say that, that first evening was about 30 minutes from their station due to the routes we would have to take. Due to those distances and those times, lots of time, and there being multiple rescue parties down there, they would send multiple units to a location to make sure somebody got there quick. We were turned around on the first four to five. Our first arrived rescue was this location right here at Old Stage Road. We had it dispatched to us as two people out in the water clinging to trees. We arrived at the top arrow, there's a gazebo, we had to make our way to that gazebo, and we inserted two tethered swimmers into that water that swim out with a life jacket in hand. They swam to the victim, they apply a life jacket, and then we retrieve the rescuer by a rope that is attached to him. Those were two successful pickoffs, and they were returned, and we released those folks to Wake County EMS. We proceeded to return back to Garner Fire Department, and we did have a couple of incidents that we got returned on or canceled to en route. Our next arrival was to Susan Drive, which is an aerial view above us. All the homes in the cul-de-sac were water lines to the floor of the house. The house at the very bottom, we retrieved two adults, one child, one dog, and the house to the north and a little right, we had two adults out of that home. We arrived on scene there, and there was National Guard and the local fire department trying to get to these folks. The National Guard was fairly ill-equipped. The local team tried to use a flat-bottom boat with a underrated horsepower motor and about lost their equipment. Those folks were assisted via the 5210 Fire Department that was on the scene. We turned those folks over to those people. We were later, our next dispatch was to this road, which is, I'll have to look at that Old Drugstore Road. This gentleman had left his home to go get coffee for him and his wife that morning. He came around the corner, did not realize that the water was at that elevation, hit the water, his vehicle left the roadway. He was able to get out of the car, and he is, in essence, to some trees to the right side of that 45 mile an hour sign, a little further back. Again, this was another tethered swimmer incident where we were able to use Mr. Domenico, the brother-in-law to Ms. Domenico. He was a tethered swimmer, entered the water, we sent him downstream, again with an additional life jacket. They wrapped this victim up, and we retrieved him again with a rope. The next call we received was, I'm sorry, that was Barber Mill Road. This is Old Drugstore Road, and the road at the bottom that's going basically from left to right, there was a van that had been abandoned. They were unsure if there was anybody in the van. Our request was to look at that van, proceed then pass it, and enter the mobile home park that's just to the left after that. The van was empty. We entered the trailer park, and to the right-hand side of the trailer park was a deep ravine. There was a vehicle in there that we were able to clear, and then proceeded. After about six trailers in, it was dry road, but they just were impassable for them to come out. We checked with all those folks, we came back through, and we checked the residence on the right of Old Drugstore Road as well. We were clearing that incident. That took quite some time due to the water that was in that area. Upon coming out, we were returning back to Cleveland Fire Department, and we were dispatched to Cornwallis Road. On this map where we had just done that rescue, Cornwallis Road is right there on the right. We couldn't go that way. It was another 30, 35-minute drive to get back around to the other side to where we needed to go for Cornwallis. Cornwallis was a very busy road that night, and there's a couple places on Cornwallis where streams in one river pass under it, and many crews stayed in that area through the evening. We were dispatched to go try to find a vehicle that had washed away with one person possibly still inside. We arrived, the water line, you see Swift Creek at the bottom, the water from Swift Creek was up to about where that pointer arrow is. The water was moving pretty quick there as well. Unfortunately, the family was there, distraught that the three people, or three of the four people in that car made it out. They just really wanted to know where their last person was. We searched that area in a neighborhood of an hour, and we were unable to locate the car. We advised them that we were going to, we'd have to get another call, we would come back and look again. So our next incident, can you back that up one please? This was Steel Bridge Road. The house that's straight ahead in the picture, that gentleman had stated earlier that he was, had his way out, that there was no issues, but there is one house to the right that we can't see. When we arrived, we looked at the gentleman that said he was gone, and in his backyard there was something in the water. It looked like it was floundering around. We asked them, the local fire department, and he goes, yeah, he's got several tethered dogs. So we had to concern that that was a dog. So we get our boat in the water, we head that way, we get about two-thirds of the way to the house, and it is a garden windmill, and the water current is making the, so we turned, and we go to our house that we need to check. We come across this barbed wire fence, and we're in an inflatable boat. Those two don't chia very well, so we were having to manipulate around it to not cut the boat. We searched this house, nobody's at this house. So in an effort to not have to go past the barbed wire fence again, we're going to try to come up the driveway in the water. We made a pass around a tree, and the trees have been pruned recently, and was a nice sharp branch down there, and it caught the corner of our boat and put a cut in the boat. So we scrambled real quick and patched the hole with our hand and shot it back to the bridge, made a call to let them know in the EOC that our boat's now down, and we would try some avenues to fix it, which we couldn't. There was another, nothing that we really accomplished on this, this particular event, but it just took a gracious period of time. We got everything back on the trailer, and we realized we still had some time before nightfall, so we wanted to go back to Cornwallis again. So we arrived, and in that period of time, the water had receded a fair amount. We were able to get back off to the side of the road and get further back into the wood line and still check. We were trying to just check areas that it looked like a car could pass through because it was heavily wooded, so we worked and worked, and it got into dusk, and it is part of our protocols that we won't do a recovery at, after dusk, just due to the danger involved with it. We spoke with the family one more time and told them that if we were still in that area and we were still dispatched, we would try again in the morning. This was the first, we left there, went back to a Cleveland Fire Department, and stayed there for just a little while, cleaned some things up, and was notified by the EOC that it was time for our rest period, which we were pretty much looking forward to. We were at hour 40 with no break. So we went back into town to the EOC, we ate dinner, and then we were given a night's rest. We picked up the next morning, going back to Cornwallis, where the water line had moved to underside of the bridge. The car was now exposed and about 120 feet roughly off the roadway. They had a tow truck there. State Patrol had actually gotten the family and moved them a little further from the incident. We located the car, we attached the car, we pulled it out, and was able to get it up to the roadway. Unfortunately, he was in the car, and, but we were able, I feel, to add closure to a family. Could you press back one more time? That evening, one more?
One more? Sure.
That evening, due to being in the water and there being basically human remains, we had to decon all of our equipment. So that day was pretty much consumed entirely with that one call. In the period when we got back through the decon, our fire chief showed up, had brought us two more boats to replace the one boat that we had a failure in. We got all of our equipment back online, we checked back in with the EOC. We were then relieved and given another rest period. We were advised to show up at 8 o'clock the next morning at, at the EOC for our further assignment. The next morning, we arrived, and we were given our papers to return home. As we were down there on a Viper radio system, which you can talk from state to state as far as you want, we can hear those rescues continuing further east. Winston-Salem Fire Department was down there, and they were being released from Edgcombe County as well. So we tried to get up with one another, and by chief, and by chief mayo at the city, we were able to get in contact with one another and then speak with our local emergency management rep, which got us reassigned. We were able, that process took the better part of that day, and we were dispatched and asked to move to Sampson County. So as a group, we moved. That's Davie County Rescue Squad, our two trailers, another Davie unit, and a city Winston-Salem unit. Our lead convoy was a gooseneck trailer loaded with bottled pallets of bottled water for us to assist with delivering. This is the point where we stopped at, and we're trying to get directions due to some roads being closed. It ended up at this point, the water truck went in one direction, and we had to go another because we got redspatched to a different location. We were advised to go to Sampson County, or to Kinston, to the local EOC rep there. We arrived there, were sent to Sampson County, and then were sent to Harold's Fire Department for the night. All those travels and all those changes put us arriving there that morning at about 12:30 in the morning. The crew that was there was already asleep, aside from a few people that stayed up because they knew we were coming, and we got settled that night. Our next day was more of a humanitarian mission to be, to check the local community of Ivanhoe. This is the entrance to Ivanhoe. We were to go in and check the homes, there were cars scattered throughout the street. We were to clear all of those and then check water levels further right and further left to see if the waters were receding. We, these are just various pictures of us traveling through town. The flooding was extensive, there were folks in their homes, some didn't care to leave. We actually took no one out of here. We gave a couple of people some bottles of water. Everybody was just content where they were. Oddly enough, this is a sign for a boat ramp where we can put your boat in the water, and we're in the road. We have helicopters there looking over the situation as well, trying to figure out water receding and things like that. We come to find out later, that's a local farmer. It wasn't somebody surveying the scene, it was a local farmer flying and checking his crops. He's farming stuff down east. This is the post office in, in that area, more flooding. Post office was open if you needed to get your mail, and true government agency, their wet floor sign was out as well. This was Harold's Ivanhoe base station, just an outer line station. The gentleman that lived behind it was a member of the fire department. They removed all their vehicles and put them up on high ground behind the station. Station was flooded, and we had the ability to pull a boat in the station. Some of the hazards that we see, we were told not to get near it, and that's a distant shot, that's fire ants. If you get your boat near it, they come on your boat, and they said it's instant. So that was just one of the many things that you see floating around down there among the snakes and so forth. We spent a lot of time in Ivanhoe trying to get that stuff cleared up. That day, we went back. When we were cleared up there, we went to one other reported rescue, and once we arrived, they advised us that it was further upriver, and it ended up actually being in another county. They were just unsure where they were. We were then advised to travel one more time. We left there and headed to Columbus County. Again, en route to Columbus County, we were diverted to Bladen. When we arrived in Bladen, we were sent to White Lake, where we stayed for about an hour, and then sent to Kelly Fire Department, which is south of White Lake. That's where we remained for the rest of our portion of the trip. This is us in Bladen County, traveling. Basically, our one call was to go check for three folks in a cul-de-sac. The bad part about it is we had to get several miles in a flooded area to get to those. The boats were loaded on a deuce and a half, and the deuce and a half took us as far as they could take us. We dropped the boats off, and we proceeded the direction we needed to go. The water had receded to a portion where we ended up having to walk about a half mile, then get back in the water and wait to the houses. We removed one person from there, brought them back into the deuce and a half, and they were released. Our portion of the trip basically ended that night. We were relieved by Jesse Levy and two other gentlemen from King Fire Department, and we ran, we were moved up to White Lake for the thought that we may have to help evacuate a migrant camp of 300, or 200 folks, but that ended up not being the case. We left the next morning, and Jesse and them remained to do one more mission of removing a gentleman with cancer from his home and getting him to a safe area. After that, it was just back to Kinston where they have to assess all of our equipment before we leave to ensure that everything's okay if anything's broke, so the paperwork's none to fix it. They all returned home. In that trip that we went on, we performed 18 missions and affected six confirmed rescues of an adult, one rescue of a child, one rescue of a dog. The humanitarian impact was greater, just the, to go in and talking with people and making sure they were okay, but that was basically the consensus of our trip down east.
Thank you. Council members, any questions that you would like to have Captain Spanar? Captain, you want to introduce your colleague there?
This is one of the gentlemen that went with us, Samuel McDuffie. He and I both are kind of leading the water rescue side of things. David Kivitt, Chief Kivitt is our, kind of our head over the department, and has just entrusted us to try to get everything worked out. Again, Mr. Ben, Mr. Ben Domenico went with us as well. He had a previous engagement tonight and couldn't make it, but we really do appreciate the support of the town and the support of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, we often say we're awfully proud of our Louisville Fire Department and our Viana Fire Department and all the things you do, but it's situations like these when you're actually called to extend your courtesy and your kindness and your compassion and your experience to other communities that we really are proud that we call, we have you folks here at home in Louisville. So thank you very much for all you do. Keep up the good work, and glad you were here tonight to make the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Corporal Fay, I believe you have a presentation that you'd like to make tonight?
Evening, Council. Mayor. Appreciate you giving me this opportunity to share just a little bit with you. Come on up here. You have to stand up here with me. Deputy Owen is kind of the highlight of what I'd like to talk to you about tonight. Naturally, all of the deputies that we work with in Forsyth County on a daily basis are striving to provide the best services that we possibly can. That's every day. However, from time to time, there are certain things when we get put in certain situations where exemplary service above and beyond must be displayed, and it's just a reaction to what is given to us, and it's something, that's why not everybody gets into our line of work, because they may not, that might not be in their interest to respond in that fashion. But then there's people like Deputy Owen. When I met Owen, I was actually currently assigned to Rural Hall as one of the community policing deputies there, and I'd been with the sheriff's office for about two years, and this guy came along, and we worked together as zone partners for a while, and I admit my first impression of Deputy Owen was, phew, a little spitfire right there, full of energy. That's exactly what he is, for those of you who have had the chance to meet him. There's two incidents that have occurred this year that I wanted to address particularly. I'll stress that we do a fantastic job every day, but Deputy Owen has been involved in two situations this year that are well above and beyond, and I decided that the best way to kind of just give you a synopsis of what had occurred, what I have actually done with him is I've submitted two memorandums through my chain of command this year, one of which is already done, and one is pending. The first, and I'll just read the memo to you to give you a synopsis. I submitted this to Captain Redmond. Letter of recommendation, I would like Deputy C. Owen to be considered for the lifesaving award for his actions on May 17, 2016. On that date, Deputy Owen and other FCSO staff responded to 7125 Graneland Drive in Louisville to investigate a domestic disturbance call for service. Upon arrival, Deputy Owen located a female subject fleeing the residence on foot. She complained that a male subject in the residence had assaulted her and attempted to strangle her before she escaped the house. Deputy Owen then responded. Deputy Owen then responded to the residence where he was unable to locate the suspect. A different male individual said that he had recently seen the suspect and that he must have passed out from intoxication. At that time, it was observed that there was a light on in a detached garage. Deputy Owen went to check the garage where he located the subject hanging from a rafter by a dog leash. Deputy Owen described the individual as having saliva dripping from his mouth and a finger twitching. Deputy Owen immediately cut the male subject from where he was hanging and began CPR. Deputy Owen was assisted by Sergeant Denton and Deputy Eisenhower by rotating turns performing CPR. EMS arrived on scene and determined that they would be transporting the male to Baptist Hospital as he had developed a steady pulse due to successful CPR efforts. Due to the prompt and professional decisions and actions made by Deputy Owen as well as those assisting him, the subject was spared from imminent death by hanging. I recommend Deputy Owen for the Life-saving Award as he has, in my opinion, satisfied the criteria established for the award. Deputy Owen demonstrated exemplary service during this incident and I believe he should be rewarded appropriately." And this is the memo that, this has actually been completed in our agency and he does actually display the Life-saving Award on his chest. However, interestingly enough, on October 27th, in the morning hours, Deputy Owen was involved in a high-speed chase. And just a few hours later, I'll get to the situation. It's funny because the day that he received that award, he also was involved in the awards ceremony when he received his ribbon and his recognition. He was also involved in this incident. "Letter of Recommendation: I would like Deputy C. Owen to be considered for the Meritorious Service Award for his actions on October 27, 2016." And just to clarify what the meritorious award is, it's for exemplary service and it falls, it's second only to our Medal of Valor. On October 27, 2016, Deputy Owen responded to 600 Wesley Drive in Louisville in reference to a welfare check call for service. The call notes suggested that a male subject at this residence had begun sending quote-unquote "goodbye" messages to family while insinuating that he would be ending his life. As Deputy Owen parked and exited his vehicle, he was almost immediately confronted by the male subject as he walked out the front door of the residence while holding a pistol to his head. Deputy Owen immediately drew his service weapon to protect himself and others. Deputy Owen promptly challenged the male due to him being armed and proceeded to engage in a lengthy conversation with the individual in an effort to convince the subject not to end his life. Deputy Owen carried on in this manner for over 40 minutes, all the time trying to continue establishing rapport with the individual, even broaching such topics as hobbies, favorite beers, tattoos, and many personal life issues. It's actually pretty close to 42 and a half minutes. It's a lot of time to talk. Deputy Owen clearly demonstrated that his desire was to aid in getting appropriate help for the individual to end the crisis moment without injury or death. All of this was done while Deputy Owen was in a very compromised position standing in the subject's front yard. Deputy Owen had been walking through the front yard at the time he was confronted by the armed individual and as such, did not have the ability to readily seek cover. Rather than disengage and retreat in fear, or end the lethal threat by means of deadly force, Deputy Owen stood his ground in a brave and admirable manner. This action is beyond commendable and likely prevented the subject from taking his life. Ultimately, after over 40 minutes, the subject dropped the magazine in his pistol, racked the slide to the clear a-chambered bullet, and threw the pistol into the front yard. Deputy Owen then approached the individual and calmly sat with him to continue speaking with him until he was able to convince the individual to seek a behavioral health evaluation. Despite facing an incredibly dangerous situation, Deputy Owen maintained his composure even while there was significant risk to his own well-being. He persevered through the lengthy encounter and his actions are of exceptional merit. His contribution during this incident likely prevented the loss of life. I recommend Deputy Owen for the Meritorious Service Award as he has, in my opinion, satisfied the criteria established for this award. Deputy Owen demonstrated exemplary service during this incident and I believe he should be rewarded appropriately." He does a fantastic job. And I had no idea when I came to Louisville how blessed I was going to be to get such a great group of guys. And I hope all of you feel as equally blessed. It's an honor to be here and I think Deputy Owen, at a very minimum, has earned a round of applause.
Thank you, Corporal. Counsel, any comments or thoughts?
Let me share.
Sandra, go ahead if you'd like.
No, just great job. They do a great job.
I know on behalf of certainly the council and our residents, we've seen two situations tonight. These individuals who every day put on their shoes and socks just like the rest of us, but they go out and they do extraordinary things. They put themselves in harm's way, they put themselves in situations to help others when many others, many others won't do that. I will borrow your words, Corporal Davenport, and say that we are truly blessed.
Fay.
Corporal Davenport, that's right.
Corporal Fay. That's the hold, that's the holdover, yeah, that's right. We truly are blessed to have all of you as part of our community and thank you once again for everything you do for us. We are, we are very proud to have your association. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we now move to the public forum part of our meeting. And this is an opportunity for our residents to share with us any thoughts that they might have, any issues that they'd like to address the council. If you'd like to do so at this time, please come forward to our podium, state your name and address, and let us hear from you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Very good. We'll remind you that those of you who would like to make written comments, there are forms on the back of the table that we will certainly keep and read in the minutes should you wish us to do that. We have no public hearings this evening, but we do have some new business. Hank, you want to pick up our resolution?
Yes, sir. The first is Resolution 2016054. This is accepting the Louisville Sanitary Sewer Master Plan prepared by Municipal Engineering Services Company of, not, of, just company. As you all remember, last month, we received a presentation from Engineer Micah Questa. It was a lengthy and involved presentation of the details of the plan. The plan has since been available for council inspection for the last 30 days. And this evening, if council is so moved, we will pass a resolution accepting this plan.
Very good. Council members, any question? We did receive a presentation of it last week. We, at that time, asked you to please consider this master plan study and to, if you had questions, to get together with Hank or Marty in between. Now, I think it's appropriate for us to go ahead and accept this as our Townwide Sewer Plan that will guide us in the future. Any questions? Very good. We'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Very good. It's very active at that end of the day as tonight. Motion was made by Councilman Zinger, second by Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. That's, this is a, is a milestone for our community to have this. We've been talking about it for a number of years, but now we have a great blueprint from which to move forward. Marty, I believe you have a resolution for us on our Gateway Project.
Mayor, Council, as you indicated, we do have a resolution for you this evening. Resolution 2016057 of the Louisville Town Council regarding a federally funded agreement for the Louisville Gateway Project on Williams Road. As a, as a bit of background, I'll just give you a brief description of what that, that project involves. This project is the last section of Louisville's Gateway Project and includes the widening of Williams Road to a three-lane curb and gutter facility with 12-foot travel lanes and a 10-foot median, median or center turn lane. The project includes a five-foot planting strip as well as five-foot sidewalks on both sides to provide pedestrian connectivity across the interchange. Other enhancements include street lighting, signage, and public art. This project will be a complement to what we've already seen accomplished on this end of Williams Road, that being the roundabout, which was just completed last year, and the bridge project that was completed by NCDOT. The resolution reads as follows. "Whereas, Town of Louisville has been advised by the Winston-Salem Urban Metropolitan Planning Organization that the funding for the small roadway project on Williams Road referred to as the Gateway Project has been approved. And whereas the limits of the project are Williams Road from Williams Road, SR 1173, US 421, to Williams Road, Shallowford Road, SR 1001, being approximately 2,000 feet in length. Whereas plans and specifications are being prepared for the project in accordance with NCDOT standard practices, regulations, and guidelines for transportation improvements. And whereas, the municipality shall obtain temporary utility usements and right-of-way if necessary for the construction of this project. Whereas, the estimated cost of the project is $1,494,680. And whereas, a 20% match of the SPTDA, no, forget it, funds is required by the Town of Louisville. And whereas, the estimated match for the Town of Louisville is $298,936. Whereas, the STPDA funds have been allocated to the town for this project, now therefore be it resolved, that the Louisville Town Council authorizes the acceptance of the MPO project appropriation for the construction of improvements for the Gateway Project and commits to the 20% local government match."
Excellent. Council members, we've talked about this on several occasions. We were fortunate last year to receive funding for our Gateway Project. Of course, this is part of our overall town road improvements that include the two traffic circles, the Great Wagon Road Project, and our Gateway Project. Any questions for Mr. Myers? Very good. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Very good. Mr. Zinger makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Good. Any opposed? Thank you. We're unanimous on that. Excellent. Hank, I believe we are up to administrative reports.
Okay. First is upcoming events at Shallowford Square and holidays. Tomorrow, we are observing Veterans Day, town offices will be closed, garbage collection services will remain on schedule, no delays or changes. Moving on to later in the month, on Thursday, the 24th, and Friday, the 25th, town offices will be closed as well in observance of the Thanksgiving holidays. And then moving us into the first part of December, on Friday, the 2nd of December, the town will have its Christmas tree lighting, which starts at 7 o'clock at Shallowford Square. And then lastly, I will mention that on Sunday, December 11th, we will have another Christmas parade in Louisville.
Very good. I guess we'll have details at our briefing about what we need to do and everything else. Very good. Any questions for our manager? If you want to, please bring us up to date on the actions we took at our briefing section, please.
Yes, sir. Last week at our briefing session, we considered and approved Resolution 2016055, awarding a contract for snow and ice removal to Speeze Lawn Care of Poptown in an amount of $225 per plow truck per hour and supervisor vehicle of $75 per hour. We also considered and approved Resolution 2016056, awarding a contract for the placement of Christmas decorations to Elite Landscape Service and Nursery Incorporated of Poptown in an amount not to exceed $11,336.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we do take action at our briefing session, which is usually held the first Thursday of every month. We'd like to report those actions out here to a broader audience so you can understand, obviously, how your town tax dollars are being spent. Thank you. Okay, we're down to our second opportunity. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment, offer a suggestion, please come forward, state your name, your address. Anybody wish to speak at this time? Very good. Again, there are forms at the back of the room should you wish to leave a written comment. And I do want to thank those people who are making comments on our Facebook page. They are all very complimentary of our deputies and our Fire Department. And thank you for your participation tonight. It's wonderful to have you online with us. All right. Council comments? Anything that you would like to contribute this evening?
I just have one comment. You know, I've said before, the greatest thing about Louisville is its people, extraordinary people. And I'll tell you what, I don't know about you guys, but it just makes me so proud to hear what our firefighters are doing and what that deputy is doing. It just is amazing. It just makes me proud and I just, it confirms the statement. We have great people here.
Concur, Councilman Zinger. Anyone else?
Yes, I actually have a couple of things. I have a picture that I'm hoping that someone can identify. It is of the 25th anniversary. There is a gentleman that was there during the portion of the letters from home. He has on a Korea, a Korean veteran hat. And I have a picture and it's, and it'll be at Town Hall. If anybody knows who this might have been that was at the 25th anniversary, we would love to get this picture in this gentleman's hands. Also, one of the things that we as a council have not talked about yet is, we did have the dedication completed of the time capsule. It is in the square. For folks that are out there in the audience, we have buried our time capsule. It is located directly in front of the restrooms at the bottom of the steps as you head towards pavilion at the town square. We had a banner that we had on display during that day of the items, of some of the items that were going to be placed into the time capsule. At some point in time, I'd like for us to talk about that as a council, as potential locations to hang that banner so that folks that are coming in to potentially Town Hall can see items over the next 50 years as to what's placed in that capsule. Because I know for sure I won't be here in 50 years. Now, there's some on staff that might be here in 50 years, but I know I myself won't be.
Joyce will.
Yes. Talk about making Joyce a place right next to the time capsule.
You're going to make us a cake, aren't you?
Yes. So, I'd like to entertain that possibly at our next briefing as to talk about what to do with the banner.
Great. So noted. Madam Clerk, if you'll put that as an item for our December briefing, please. Thank you. Any other comments? Just a couple of quick things that I'd like to add. First off, thank you very much to our mayor pro tem, Sandra Mott, for your great work for pulling together and the staff as well, our volunteer luncheon. Also occurred on the afternoon where we buried our time capsule. And let me just assure you that its proximity to the restrooms no way diminishes the importance of the time capsule or the contents thereof. But Sandra, you all did and the staff did a great job for our volunteer luncheon. We had well over 100 of the folks that do your business every day as part of our volunteers, as part of our members of our boards and committees. So, it was, it was a wonderful opportunity to spend some time with them and to say thank you for their service to the town. Next, I'd also like to thank the residents of Louisville for your support of the school bonds. Many of you voted during early voting, many of you voted on Tuesday. We had a great number of volunteers from our boards and committees who stepped up and worked the polls and spoke to residents, told them why these bonds were important for Louisville. For those of you that didn't get my pitch or their pitch, we have $4 million of improvements for Louisville Elementary School. We have $350,000 for improvements at Vianna Elementary School. And we have $25 million in a new middle school that'll be built up on Louisville-Vienna and Robin Hood Road. Folks, the vote of support that you gave on Tuesday is a huge step for our community because schools make communities. And we have two wonderful schools and in a few years, we'll be able to add a third school. So, thank you very much for investing in the future. Would like to add just one other comment, ask for a comment from our rising sophomore or rising junior at, from Reagan High School who's here as part of a civics project, who also plays offensive tackle for the Reagan Raiders. Your observations tonight? You want to share anything with us? Most interesting, he says. Well, very good. We'll take that as a, as a commendation for our work here tonight. Anything else before we adjourn? Very good. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
It's been unanimous at the end of that table. Motion by Mr. Zinger, second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for watching at home. Thank you for participating in Facebook. And we hope you've enjoyed watching your town council at work. We are adjourned.